You see I have the bell rings for awhile some days, right?
Yeah.
Though on certain days and have concerts.
Yeah, not a long time ago, there's one underground.
Alright, everybody, we're welcome back from a close session, Mr. City Attorney. Any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilman in close session on the items on the agenda, received direction, but nor for the full expectation.
Alright, I'm gonna ask our city manager to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let me begin, the pledge leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation. Invisible, but their history just the problem.
We'll get into uh proclamations and presentation is uh there's a presentation proclamation to uh Deputy Nevins is the deputy here.
Uh he should be able to. There it is.
Deputy, welcome. I don't know if you want to turn on your screen. We do have a proclamation.
Uh, yes, give me one moment here. I was uh I was told that someone was supposed to turn on the the camera for me.
Deputy, since you are not here, we're gonna read it from the dais. Uh, and this is a city of Coachella, California proclamation. Whereas in January twenty twenty-two Deputy Ne- uh Nevins conducted a lengthy investigation which resulted in arresting four people for possession of several hundred fentanyl pills, powdered fentanyl, methamphetamine, one stolen vehicle, two ghost guns, and one recovered stolen firearm. And whereas Deputy Nevins has completed two tours at the thermal station from August twenty twelve to July twenty sixteen and November twenty twenty-two, May twenty twenty-three. And whereas Deputy Nevins has been part of the uh career criminal apprehensive team, the cat team since March twenty twenty-one to May twenty twenty-three, and whereas in March twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-two Deputy Nevins received commendations from the supervisor regarding the arrest and filings of three Watson uh arrests. And whereas in January twenty twenty-two, Deputy Nevins coordinated and conducted several by bus of illegal fireworks within the city of Coachella and receives a commendation from Captain Bianco after recovering over fifteen hundred pounds of illegal mortar type fireworks. And whereas Deputy Nevins also received commendations from OTS grant manager for timely timely grant reports and accurate budget maintenance management. And now therefore I, Stephen A Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Coachella and the City Council of the City of Coachella, by the powers vested in us, do hereby recognize Deputy Ryan Nevins and urge all citizens of the City of Coachella to thank him for his service dedication and care he has provided for the families of Coachella. Thank you Deputy. How are you? You're you're muted Deputy.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. How are you Deputy?
I'm wonderful. How are you sir?
We're well, we're well. Thank you for uh your service and for caring so much about the city and um taking methamphetamines, fentanyl, ghost guns, stolen cars, fireworks off of our streets, illegal fireworks. We appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Anything you would like to add?
Uh, yes, uh, just briefly, um, I would like to thank um uh start with Hector and Alex Alagon. Those guys have been uh extremely helpful to me throughout the uh the years. Um Hector has been my my go-to for everything regarding traffic and uh streets and DUI checkpoints. Uh, the same with Alex. They've all been out there during a critical collisions, uh giving whatever assistance they can. And it's uh it has not been unnoticed, especially on my behalf, because they have uh they've helped me immensely. Um, I'd also like to thank um Miss Denise Delgado. Um, she's been excellent. Um, I I I definitely appreciate her and the um the efforts that uh she has shown in uh appreciating us and the um the work that we do. Um, so I I do appreciate that. Thank you so much Denise. And um also um I'd like to thank uh you uh as well, Mr. Hernandez. Um, thank you so much for uh our continued efforts with the the Coachella Community Action Team, and I admittedly am horrible at public speaking, so thank you so much for everything you guys. Um, it's been a blast. Um, I'm gonna miss everyone there. Um, especially uh the Coachella Community Action Team. They've uh they've been great and uh helping me succeed. And um I'm I'm in Mississippi. I really will. Um, you guys have been great and um the same with the oh and Maritza as well. Maritza's been great too. Um, she's uh she's definitely helped me out with um the checkpoints as well as uh keeping me up to date with all the city functions that uh she wanted us present for. So thank you all of you guys so much. Um, I appreciate everything that you've done for us uh and for me personally. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy and uh we wish you well on and Godspeed on your future endeavors. It sounds like you are gonna be kind of patrolling in the region now, so.
Yes, sir. That is correct. I'm in Idaho now.
Wow, well, stay warm.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Nevins, I just wanted to thank you for your service and for your kindness. Um, you know, while you did a lot of things of, you know, getting drugs, legal drugs off the streets, you 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 have shown our our families and our residents incredible kindness and care. And I appreciate that above all else uh is that people remember you out there, your professionalism, and they really felt that you cared a great deal for them. And so I thank you for the kindness that you have shown our residents.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. It's been fun.
Deputy. Alright, we'll move on now to, is there uh any representatives from uh fibromyalgia or is it a little bit of awareness?
I think they'll be joining us via Zoom as well.
Yes, um, I'm Juana Mata and I am the founder of Looms for Lupus and we are requesting the proclamation for lupus and fibromyalgia.
Give me the harder name. Alright, um. Remind me your name?
Juana Mata and Estela Mata.
Hola Juana and Estela.
Hola buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Este. Yeah, good evening.
Yeah, good evening everyone.
I know, I'm good. I think I hear the translators. Oh, uh, I'll read it in English and then you can. Yeah, yeah. You got it. Or it's it's you know, I feel like it's an echo. Yeah, alright, so I read the proclamation and um my name is Natalie uh Mayor Pro Tem in the City of Coachella. Alright, so whereas fibromyalgia. Okay, fibromyalgia, there you go. Whereas fibromyalgia is a complex chronic illness which causes fatigue, cognitive problems, and debilitating pain in women, men, and children of all ages and races. And whereas over four million people in the United States, two to four percent of the population, and millions of people worldwide have been diagnosed with fibromyalgia at a disease for which there is no no known cure. And whereas fibromyalgia often takes an average of three to five years to receive a diagnosis. And whereas existing public information, medical education, research, and research and resources to properly serve patient communities remain inadequately dis- uh disseminated and are insufficient in addressing that the needs of specific diverse populations and other underserved groups. And whereas fibromyalgia is present in children and young adults, which which poses unique challenges for this population to not only only struggle with the symptoms of the illness, but also from the lack of understanding and the low the lack of acceptance and whereas increased public awareness, education, and research are the key to winning the battle against fibromyalgia. And now therefore I, uh Stephen Hernandez, Mayor and the City Council of Coach- City of Coachella, by the power vested in us, do hereby claim May twenty twenty-three as Fibromyalgia Awareness Month. And there's all citizens of the City of Coachella to increase awareness and understanding of fibromyalgia in our community. And they will mail this in?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. I myself, I live with fibromyalgia. And I was diagnosed in two thousand and eighteen, and my daughter was diagnosed at the age of thirteen. And it does impact, you know, our our mental health. It impacts our physical health and just, you know, it's so important for us to raise awareness and to bring more support because there are so many people that live with um chronic pain every day. And there is a very um uh likelihood of increase in suicidal ideation uh when you live with a chronic pain um every day. So I just wanted to raise that awareness. And twenty percent of people that live with lupus, um which can have uh fibromyalgia as well. So thank you. Thank you so much, um Mayor and um and Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members in the City of Coachella for proclaiming um Fibromyalgia Awareness Month in the City of Coachella.
Got it. I'll pass it on now to council members that will read the uh proclamation for lupus.
Thank you, Juana, for sharing your story. Um, whereas systemic lupus, commonly known as lupus, is a chronic complex and often life-threatening autoimmune disease that randomly attacks the body's own tissues, vital organs and joints, as whereas it is estimated that there are over three hundred and twenty-two thousand to one point five million people with lupus in the United States, and there are an estimated sixteen thousand new cases each year. Lupus mostly strikes women of childbearing age. However, men, children, and teenagers develop lupus too. And whereas increasing public awareness and focusing on public attention on lupus and its devastating impact on patients' lives will provide hope for a better future for those affected. And whereas lupus is one of the most difficult diseases to diagnose because its symptoms come and go, mimic other diseases, and there is no single test that can definitively identify the illness. Early diagnosis and proper treatments are critical to the improvement of the quality of life and survival rate of people with lupus. There is no known cause or cure for lupus. And whereas Looms for Lupus works to raise awareness of the signs and symptoms of lupus and to promote education, research, social support, and quality medical care for our citizens who live with or care for someone who struggles with this disease. And now therefore I, City Council and Mayor Hernandez of the City of Coachella, by the power invested in us, do hereby recognize Lupus Awareness Month and urge all citizens in the City of Coachella to increase awareness and understanding of lupus in our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, again, you know, lupus is an autoimmune condition and it does affect a lot of Latino Hispanic families, just like ours. There's not a lot of information out there. There's not a lot of awareness, and there's very little awareness in Spanish. And that's one of the things that we wanted to do. Mi mama no habla inglés. And so we wanted her to also understand and learn not only about lupus, but also about treatments and about awareness and support. Our community needs the support. We need to raise awareness. Our our people are not getting diagnosed with lupus early enough, and then there are irreversible damages like damages to the kidney, damages to other organs, and sometimes even death. It is sad to see that our children as young as six are getting diagnosed and not getting treatments. It is sad to see fifteen-year-olds dying of lupus. We need to educate our communities, our Hispanic Latino communities, and we need to raise more awareness about lupus, about the symptoms, and that's why we are here. So thank you again for declaring uh Lupus Awareness Month in the City of Co- Coachella, a city that needs our support and awareness, and we are hoping to hopefully partner there with one of the hospitals and nurses so we can bring more education to the City of Coachella. So thank you again.
Well, thank you.
Thank you still, I think you wanna.
Thank you.
I wanted to give her a few comments really quick. Juana, um, I I have several people who uh have lupus, and I want to thank you for bringing this forward and then also um mentioning the physical pain that um you guys go through and also the mental toll that it takes on uh your daily lives and also the incredible amount of pain that it must have, knowing that uh your children have been passed on with similar illnesses. So I uh I just thank you for all that you do. You've, you know, said it perfectly here. And so we're very lucky to have you, um, you know, putting this information out there and making sure that other people have access to the resources that are needed. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on now to our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual operating budget presentation.
Good evening, council members. I'm happy that we're doing this um on time this year. We want to get this thing through and so that everybody can have a nice rest for the summer. Um, we just met last meeting and went over mid-year, so I'm not gonna go over, you know, the the highlights of what's going on um in the economy right now. The Fed did raise rates by a quarter of a percent, so um that did come to fruition. But we'll jump into what we expect to see next year within your budget. I've given you all handouts for this presentation and also you have the entire budget. Now, the budget had some pages in there that will be updated once we take the budget to you on the twenty-fourth. There's resolutions and limit and some other things that have to go in there, and that's why they were not in there at this point because they're just the, we can't put them in there until it's finished. The actual document, um even though it was published late last year, it will be published and up on the website. July first is what we will be shooting for, so that everybody will have a copy of that. So I will jump right into it. First page is talking about general fund revenues. I want to bring to your attention that this year we're expecting thirty-two million four hundred thirty-one thousand. Next year, we're expecting thirty-three million seven hundred thousand. Basically, there's an increase in your tax revenues. Uh, VLF is actually up almost four hundred thousand and sales tax is flat and the sales tax is flat because I wanted to be conservative. Uh, we talked at the last meeting about new car sales and how there was almost a million dollars of new car sales last year as what we had taken into revenue. Being that there's a recession possibly, looking at the fourth quarter of this current fiscal year, I took back that estimate by five hundred thousand and put it more in the line is what we'd seen before in the past, um back when I served as your um city manager when I was here a couple of years ago. So do I expect that to happen? Possibly. It depends upon what shakes out, you know, with the debt ceiling limit and some other stuff going on. But you still have, if you looked at the end of this, you still had about two hundred thousand dollars in surplus at the end of this, which was a great thing considering that the MOUs were considered in this. Um, there's four positions that were frozen. There are three positions actually two positions that are being requested. There's a equipment operator and a halftime parks um maintenance person and a in the finance department of promotion. Uh, but that's all built into the budget, and you will get the details of that when the staff report comes out to you on the twenty-fourth, exactly what those positions are. Also, you'll notice down at the bottom, transfers, transfers this year were four point six million dollars this year. There are five point eight million. Um, our utilities and anything that is for services to the general fund paid by transfer. Water, sewer, fire, and L N O Ds pay for general fund services. Last year, when this calculation was done, it was based upon two years ago, actuals. I did it based upon what the, when we put the study together, we had looked at um putting together transfers based upon budgeted numbers, and that's what I did. Because when last year's numbers were put into the system, five million dollars was what was looked upon as far as overhead from the general fund. It's actually closer to seven million, and that's what it was last year. So our transfers out of water and sewer to pay for general fund services were actually less than what they should have been this current year that we're in. So that has been trued up to an actual number that we should be transferring. General fund should be made whole by the services provided to the other departments. General fund expenditures. You will notice that we've added uh Public Information Officer. I thought that was important to start tracking expenditures there. We also have created a Development Services Admin Line that was actually budgeted for last year. We've continued to do that. Um, the changes, uh just briefly, the city clerk, um, there's no election cost, so that's why that department is lower. You'll notice that there's a big drop in the city manager's budget. That's because the C, the P I O has been moved out, and there's also been some expenditures from grant administration that have been moved into there also. Cause you'll notice that, of course, there's an extra two hundred and ten thousand for P I O, and then there was almost another two hundred thousand for the I'm sorry, the Economic Development Department, not grants. Grants was also another thing, but um, there is a, we used to budget in the city manager for um grants, P I O, economic development. They've all been spread out now. So it's just a better way of tracking costs moving forward. Um, general government has a three hundred thousand dollar increase. Our insurance went up. Our liability insurance went up almost three hundred thousand, and that's gonna be an issue moving forward. Uh, we haven't got our quotes on our health insurance yet for our employees, but I'm I'm sure that we're gonna see some healthy increases there. We put in like I said, within this budget, the increases have been approved through council with the MOUs. Um, we put in a ten percent increase for health insurance. However, we don't know what those numbers are gonna be until July. Um, hopefully ten percent is enough to cover it. Uh, code enforcement is up, and that's because we're changing the way um we're doing parking citations. It was recommended by staff to actually have the park rangers working in code, uh because they do a lot um with data ticket, which is the tracking system that is used to track citations, whether it's issued by code or by parks. We have a lot of customers coming to the counters asking for assistance. And I thought that it was better in conjunction with talking with the city manager to consolidate those efforts so that the customers coming in to pay their sites would go to one place instead of going back and forth between the corporate yard and the civic center. So that's a recommendation there. So you see a strike, a slight drop in what the parks budget is. Police went up two hundred thousand and fire went up three hundred thousand. So in total, your your total budget from this year, thirty-two million four thirty-one thousand is increased to thirty-three million five hundred one thousand. However, you'll see that there is a two hundred thousand dollar um savings between revenues over expenditures that will go into fund balance. On the next page, uh this is the one that I really liked. It tells a better story than by departments. Where are you spending your money and and where the increases happened? Salaries and benefits have increased two hundred thousand, but there was some additional savings with freezing a few positions as compared to adding uh one and a half positions. There is a savings there. The two hundred thousand is a net of those things. Still, overall, not as much as you would expect based upon looking at seven percent next year of that total number. You think it'd be closer to like four hundred and fifty thousand, and it's less because of those changes that have been made. Public safety, again, three hundred thousand dollar increase for police. Um, advertising expense, economic development now has uh ramped up and they're building their budgets, and there's more advertising within the economic development budget. So that's why you see an increase there. And transfers and allocations. When I originally originally put together the budget, I thought we're gonna have about a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus. However, I did not realize that we had some C I P expenditures that were general fund transfers. Those funds were not spent this year, and so they need to be budgeted again. So even though they're showing up again, we're not spending them this year. We'll be spending them next year. So those monies will go back into fund balance for this year. It will actually help improve fund balance totals at the year end. And looking at fund balance, um, we start the year at thirty-three million eight hundred thirty-five thousand of that, twelve million nine hundred thousand is spendable. And you had four point six million dollars that was reserved, and the reserved or the assignments are actually down below. There was six hundred thousand dollars in there for staff realignment. We've taken that out because that has taken place. So with the additional hundred ninety-six thousand in fund balanced added, your total fund balance will be thirty-one, thirty-four million thirty-one thousand. However, you'll notice that your unrestricted increased by seven hundred ninety-six thousand because that assigned has reduced by the six hundred thousand. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Moving on to the water authority. We start the year with a a net ending position of fourteen million six hundred eighty-two thousand. Um, connection fees were expected to increase by about nine hundred thousand because of the activity that's going on with multifamily and single-family housing. However, utility service is only increasing a hundred thousand because we added a hundred ninety-two homes. Um, we expect to add more, of course, during the year, but we do not know that number. So you go conservative. So based upon the average bill of fifty-five dollars a month by a hundred ninety-two homes multiplied by twelve months, we come up with about a a hundred thousand of extra revenue over last year's estimate. Replenishment stays the same. Interest and grant money, um, it's it's less just because there are not as many grants. You will notice that operating costs have remained approximately the same. There's just increases there in salaries and benefits as well. Administrative costs have increased. Depreciation is the same. Debt service interest payments have increased because we refinanced a bond. When it was refinanced, they paid for the interest and principal for that year. That is back to being what it was normally. So if you look back in the history that I've given you within your booklet, you'll notice that it's back to what it was two years ago, that line I. So at the end of the year, we take in twenty-two thousand greater than what we started the year with. So our ending balance is one uh fourteen million seven hundred four thousand. Within that administrative cost, that transfer that I was talking about, that's built into there also. There was an additional, I think it was almost four hundred thousand that needed to go out of here to pay for general fund services that actually should have been bought this year as well. Sanitary district. We start the year at six million three hundred eight thousand. Um, our connection fees again are up based upon the activity I was talking about with multifamily and single-family housing. Um, utility service also up because of those additional connections, six point seven million. Uh, total revenue is ten million five hundred thousand. Something in operating cost, you'll notice there's a big difference there. Three million four hundred thousand is compared to five million two hundred thousand this year. That's because last year, we have debt service that we pay. There's a one point five million dollar payment that we make to the USDA on improvements that were made that I was talking about at the last meeting back in two thousand and eight. That was not budgeted last year. Um, I've included it in the budget. I've included it in the budget because it's something that we have to cover. It's something that should be disclosed. It's something that we need to talk about. We have another four years to pay on this and we need to plan for that in the future. How we use those monies, but also talking about water answer, where we'll be working on rate studies as well, which is something that will come after. We know what's going on with six and the water piece of it. Sanitary can go quicker, but we need to finish our ref tell us study and the salary survey for those individuals as well. So administrative costs have increased, but that's also because of that transfer, the additional monies and transfer. Debt services dropped some because of, we're, we're nearing the end of what we pay on that twenty eight million dollars. So every year there's a drop on what we pay in interest because the outstanding amount of principal.
Well, you don't think we should just pay it off?
We borrowed at one point nine percent. Yeah, we, we earn more money putting that money delays right now than we do paying off debt. So. Right now, I mean, at some point, you know, if it gets back to where we're making a tenth of a percent on stuff, then you know, maybe, but still. We can't go out and borrow money at that lower rate. In fact, we've looked into it, so. I would not recommend that.
I know, but my, my, my only concern is that. When you do your rate studies and that, and then they do the calculations and they'll factor in that debt that we owe. That's gonna be kind of.
They're gonna know when it expires. The, the thing that we have to think about is we should be covering depreciation. There should be enough money. We should have a surplus so that we've covered depreciation and unfortunately we have not had rates high enough to the point where we cover our own depreciation. So at some point, we're gonna have to borrow to expand the plant. We don't have money sitting here because we've set aside.
The plant's got plenty of capacity. Some like a thousand homes.
Uh, no, probably more than that, probably closer to four thousand homes. So is, we, we have two million gallons of capacity in the plant at this point, but. Once we get over four and a half million gallons per day that we're treating, we have to become like tertiary plant that upgrade. A few years ago, back when I was here, was going to be over thirty million dollars to upgrade the plant to be able to treat that way. I can imagine what it costs now. There is no money to pay for that right now. So even though the debt is in there, we're going to have to issue more debt to pay for those improvements. So. It's not as. Or grants, absolutely.
I'm just thinking. But we, well, I'm sure we'll have a normal post conversation.
Yes. So at the end of the year, we have a surplus of about five hundred eighty thousand. Increasing our total balance in the utilities to six point eight million dollars, almost six point nine million. Lastly, the fire district, we disclose this separately because we collect property taxes. Back when the city was originally set up, we did not have a police district, so there was not a separate tax for police, but there is one for fire. And so we collect property tax on everybody's parcel. And that brings in approximately nine hundred and forty eight thousand dollars a year. So the, the thing to look at here is. Our contract went from three point eight million dollars up to four million dollars. So it increased. We know that based upon the contracts that have been put in place by fire, that they're going to be reducing their hours over time. They also have some colas. Our, in our cost increase are going to go up greater in fire than they are in police as a percentage of what we're spending out of the general fund over the next three years. And that's something that we have to keep in mind because we're gonna have to add because their hours are being cut. You still have to have the staffing there. We're gonna have to add at the end of this possibly two additional firefighters coming into the station, which would cost us nearly five hundred thousand dollars alone. Without any colas or anything else going on. So our, our C F D, because of the homes that we permitted. One million nine hundred, I'm sorry, one million ninety three thousand property taxes, nine hundred forty eight thousand. There's some interest that's earned because there is some balance there, forty two thousand. Money comes out of the general fund to help pay for fires. This is not covered completely by the C F D or by property taxes. So the general fund takes money and transfers it in and pays for fire services. Thankfully, it's not the entire amount, but it's over half and two point five million dollars. Something else we have to keep in mind because if we're not building homes and property taxes are not increasing, then the money's gonna have to come from the general fund to pay for those. Increased fire costs over time. At the end of the day, we balance because of the transfer coming out of the general fund. There is a fund balance at the end of three hundred fifty thousand. We have not been billed for the ladder truck that sits over in Indio yet. And so that's why that grand fifty thousand is sitting there because at some point we are gonna have to pay. Equipment that they've ordered. It's just not here yet. So with that, I will turn it over to Nathan. Sorry, Andrew. Yeah, I am. I made the, my bad. To go over the C I P with you and then when we're finished, then if there are questions, we'll answer questions. But I would like to bring this back to the council on the twenty fourth to adopt the budget so that we get this behind us.
Bill, thank you for the piece of paper in our hands.
Good evening. Sorry, didn't print paper. My presentation is more slides, so I don't want to waste that much paper. So I'm presenting the capital groupmate program portion of the budget. So our C I P budgets, project summary, I'm, I'm not going to go through this whole list with you, but just to. Let some of the new members know how this is set up. All of our projects are, are scheduled and this shows what the total expected project cost would be. That's the lifetime cost of a project. And then we have the expected expenditures for this given year. They're broken up into categories. So F is for facilities, P is for parks, S T for streets. L L is for landscape and lighting maintenance districts. S is for sewer and W is for water. So this is the list of projects that we, we. Cut this list down so it would only show projects where we have anticipated spending within this year. The complete project list is larger than this. Where, when you look at the five year plan. The total of all of these projects that are including the five year plan is a little more than two hundred and seventy million worth of projects. And the expected expenditures for this coming fiscal year are thirty four million seventy five seven twenty two. Looking at how that is going to be funded, these are all of the funding sources that go into our C I P project. We have grants, we have dip fees, development fees, T D A measure one, S B one. There are water operation grants, water connection fees. And you'll notice one of the smallest numbers on there is general fund. Do make every effort to make sure that we're funding our projects using. Grants and development fees and, and not general funding expenditures. Looking at that exact same information in a graphical way. You can see that when you take all of our grant funds that are going into our C I P projects, it's nearly fifty percent of all costs are covered by grant funds. For the coming year. And when you have include the. Water and sewer operations and grants and development fees and grant funds were close to eighty percent being funded by just those three sources. And you'll see the very small sliver of only one point six percent is what we have budgeted from the general fund to go to. Our total C I P projects for this year. So moving on to the actual projects, I'm just going to highlight a lot of the kind of larger projects that are coming forward. If you have any questions about any specific projects, feel free to ask. Otherwise, I'm gonna try to go through it. Pretty quickly, because you've seen a lot of these projects before. Um, I always like to separate the Avenue fifty corridors because there is so much going on on Avenue fifty. There's a lot of projects on that corridor. So I always like to. Highlight those and make sure you understand all the different projects that are along that corridor. On Avenue fifty, we have four bridge projects on Avenue fifty corridor. Starting from west to east, we have a, the Avenue fifty bridge over the stormwater channel. We have a proposed bridge at the eighty six interchange. We have, and then we also have a proposal to extend Avenue fifty. Over the American canal, all the way out to a new freeway interchange up on I ten and a halfway up towards Sherraco Summit. So there are two bridges associated with that project as well. One bridge go over the channel and then an additional bridge for the freeway interchange at I ten. Looking at each one of those projects, I will say the projects that are. East for the extension, you know, those are highly dependent on, on developers moving on large tracks. So those we don't have expected expenditures for the coming year on these projects. But this is the large freeway interchange that would support potential future expansion and development to the east up on the I ten. In order to get to that, we also have to build a bridge over the C V channel. Both of these projects, we did have agreements with Sebag and the developer. So these are actually fully designed shovel ready projects. And any potential to move forward with actual construction would be obviously depend on agreements with developers in regional defined funding. Projects a little closer to home that are. Kind of more on our radar. We have the interchange at S R eighty six. That project is, has full environmental and we have been seeking grants for a couple of years now to try to get. The design portion covered as well. So. If they would. At the point we get grant funding, then we would move forward with the S R eighty six interchange. We do have full grant funding for the Avenue fifty bridge over the whitewater channel. And that is finishing up the right away acquisition and the design phase right now. So there is a substantial amount of funding shown in this year's budget to finish the design and finish all the right away acquisition. So that we can break ground and actually have that bridge move forward with the big fifty million dollar cost.
Next year's budget, let's start. September of next year.
Possibly.
Throwing out goals because we've been, I've been listening to these properties, this project for a long time and we've had average funded for a while.
Yes.
And you know, it's been like three, four years that we haven't moved on it. And so I, I think the urgency to move on that project is here.
Yes, um, that project is scheduled for the twenty twenty five fiscal year with the highway bridge program. Since we have highway bridge program money funded for that project, they're pretty strict about what year they allocate money. So that, that project has always been scheduled to have the construction funding be programmed on that year. And we, we're on schedule with the right away acquisition and the design. To request that full construction allocation for the fiscal year that it was originally budgeted for. But they, uh, they do not give you money early when you're on that project or when you're on that grant program.
Cities cannot to get reimbursed.
Yes, but then you'd have to front fifty million dollars. And wait for reimbursement, uh, which has not been a option that's been favorable with our finance department. Um, and then the other big Avenue fifty project is the Avenue fifty widening and this is from Colonia to Caesar Chavez. Which involves installing medians and, and widening the road along the entire project. Some of this project has already started. D R Horton has already completed their portion in front of their project. And we've also come to city council and had D R Horton expand some of their scope in order to get from Calhoun to Van Buren. We are finishing up the right away acquisition phase right now. And as soon as we have finished the right acquisition phase, these plans are a hundred percent ready, shovel ready to go as well. So. We fully anticipate this project going full steam within this fiscal year. Um, as far as landscape and maintenance districts, uh, these are primarily handed through public works, uh, but they. Did provide me a list of the districts that we have anticipated projects going on this year. Um, all of these projects are generally. Improvements to the basins in installing irrigation and start installing plant material. Seating and lighting and that kind of thing so that we can have the enhanced usable basins and, and all of our communities. Um, and right now the districts that are proposed to have improvements within this year, our district ten, district thirteen, fourteen, thirty three. And we'll do the lighting improvements in L M D sixteen as well. As far as parks projects, we do have a lot of bigger park projects coming in this coming year. I put back to him a court on here just because the project isn't finished yet. Um, so we'll have the notice of completion in the next fiscal year. So the final payments will be. Carried into the next fiscal year, um, but I do look forward to having a grand opening on that project very soon with the community and with council. As far as new projects coming forward, we also have C B D G funding for. Two different sets of C B D G funding for bathrooms and a concession stand at Backduma Park. Uh, so we are proposing a new restroom and a concession stand at Fields five and six, which are the northernmost fields adjacent to Frederick. Avenue. Um, and then we also have grant fundings to replace the bathroom structure that is at the basketball courts. That's the oldest bathroom at the park, uh, dilapidate. I don't know if you've been inside there, uh, but. Uh, we do have funds to replace that structure as well. So we're combining both of those projects into ones so that we can fast track them and have them move quicker. We do anticipate this project, uh, both starting and completing within this next fiscal year. Uh, so we'll have the new, the new restroom, the new concession stand and the replacement of the old restroom at Backduma Park. The other big park project coming, this was a, a large grant funding source that we received for Central Park, which is on Avenue fifty two. Between, I think Hernandez and. Androsa, thank you. I think this project's been presented a lot to the council and. We are out right now seeking bids for the designs. So this will be moving full speed ahead with design and we anticipate. Designed to be complete this year and construction will actually be in the next fiscal year.
The name is up for debate, right?
Um, certainly.
But it looks like New York Central Park, so. It's not even central.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So when we, obviously we'll, we'll have a lot of community engagement. We'll have engagement with the Parks Commission and Council. Um, so any recommendations for a, a better name or a different name, but it will obviously be entertained.
Got it.
So additional infrastructure improvements, I already went over all the Avenue fifty projects, which are kind of the bulk of our infrastructure budget. And I did want to highlight a couple of projects that are, that are not on the C I P, but are infrastructure projects that will be. Delivered this coming fiscal year. One is the Sunline Transportation Hub, uh, which is part of the overall Pueblo Viejo Sustainable Transportation Project. That project has gone out to bid. Uh, they already have the construction bids back. So. That project is expected to break ground soon and should be completed within the next fiscal year.
What did they end up, what they, what they pick at the end of the day?
Who did they?
Or like, what, like, I don't remember seeing the elevation of the renderings of what it was gonna look like.
We did a, or I did a presentation to city council showing renderings and kind of the whole site layout. Before. We took it to planning commission for approval. So that was presented at that time. I don't have them in my presentation right now because that is a presentation that have been previously.
Or email to councils, yes, I have that for your records. Cause although we like seeing your. Engineering plans here sometimes, just a colorful picture.
Yeah, so the. Some of the colorful renderings had the older shade structures, which were denied by council and planning. And they actually didn't redo nice color renderings that had the, the new approved shade structures. So that's why I want the engineering drawing, because that shows the, the big enhanced shade structures. I didn't want to throw up a rendering on there that had the incorrect shade structure shown. Another project that is not a city C I P, C I P project is the Play Will Viejo Phase two, which is a triply project. Um, that ties into all of our Pueblo Viejo sustainable. Um, transportation projects that we have done, and they will be doing improvements on Baghdad on Tripoli. And they'll be finishing all of the improvements along the south side of Sixth Street. From Palm to Caesar Chavez, and they'll also be doing intersection improvements at Caesar Chavez and six. Um, and intersection improvements at Baghdad and Caesar Chavez.
Yeah, these are not the renderings, are they?
No, that's an older picture. We're still working, they're still working on uh completing. The architectural review.
It looks like.
So.
I don't know Miami or something.
The connecting Coachella, that's our A T P project that we. Applied for an A T P grant, but we did not get the A T P funding for. Uh, but we did get grant funding to complete the environmental and thirty percent design. Um, so that is in this year's budget, we will be moving forward and getting our full environmental clearances, so that will be much more favorable to. Get the grant funding in the future. So this one is just uh an environmental and an initial design project. Um, the Avenue forty eight widening, uh this was a project that was supposed to be finished in the last fiscal year, it's rolling over into the future fiscal year. The county has had some. Uh, issues trying to get the. Permissions from all of the adjacent property owners as far as the portion on their project. This is a joint project between the county, the city and C VAG, because the county has the north side of the street at the Carver Track. We have the south side of the street adjacent to Glenroy. Um, but we anticipate the the county fully resolving all of their um design setbacks on the north side of the street. Um, so this project should only move forward this coming fiscal year. Um, for infrastructure maintenance.
Yes, C V link probably gonna get started this fiscal year too.
Yes, that is true. That's not a city uh C I P project as well.
Either of those.
Yes, this, the last one is a city C I P product. But. That is a a good point, the C V link is breaking ground this year, and they'll be completing this section from. Um, Sierra Vista Park to Airport Boulevard, so we'll have a a full section with um. And amenities at both sections within our city.
Yeah.
Uh, but they will break ground this year, they don't expect to finish this year though. I believe the construction window won't be complete until the the next fiscal year. Um, for the street management program, I just went over all of this in the last presentation, so I. Don't want to go into a whole lot of detail on this, um, but we are moving forward with the um street. Maintenance survey that was approved at the last meeting, um, so we have. We're moving quickly on that project, we're already, you know, getting them going on that, as soon as that is fully prepared. We will be presenting that to city council um in order to look at what the. Street maintenance needs are and deciding which streets uh we're going to choose once we have that full plan in front of us and we have that. Full list of all the streets and we can and see exactly what we're facing as far as street maintenance for the year. For facilities projects, um, the fire station rehabilitation will be finished within this fiscal year, that project is still. On time and on budget. And. Um, it's about fifty percent complete, um, so again, we're looking forward to finishing that project up and having a grand opening. Uh, the other big facilities project that will be happening this year is the library annex. We have already put out R F Ps for design, those were actually due today, so we will be awarding the design contract soon. Uh, we anticipate the full design um to be complete with this fiscal year. And then the construction will be the following fiscal year. For utility projects, um. This is another one, I didn't have a very good uh picture for, but um. One of the, a nice large project that we are finally hoping to get off the ground this year is the Shady Lane consolidation and. A mezquah. Um, septic and sewer conversion, we're going to be installing water mains, um, a sewer lift station, sewer force main. And we're getting consolidation of utility services down to. Some trailer parks that are uh south of Avenue fifty four in the county area, these are fully grant funded projects, so this, these are several. Uh, several million dollar projects that are that are grant funded, um, that we're working with the county on in order to uh. Incorporate and get those utility surface services down to the communities to the south of us. Another project that we will be moving forward with with full design this year is a sewer main replacement capacity enhancement project on Tyler. Between Avenue fifty three and fifty four. I don't have a lot of exciting slides for utility projects because. They're underground, so. Um, any questions? I tried to go through that pretty quick. I can go back and discuss any projects if anyone has any questions over anything.
Any questions and remember that if you do have questions, you can see staff by next meeting. On the budget or on the C I P.
Great.
Thank you.
A lot of cities on there.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on now to written communications, I think there are any, move on to the consent. Yes.
If you didn't hear me, there are none.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to the consent calendar. As recommended, the consent items be acted upon simultaneously unless any separate action or discussions. I will not be participating in item number eleven or item number twelve. Uh, I'm gonna ask that we move the consent calendar with those exceptions and then I'll get off the dais.
All right, uh motion to approve consent calendar.
I I want to pull eighteen and twenty of the consent.
Okay, we'll move on to uh item number eighteen.
Eighteen and twenty.
Oh, item eleven and twelve, they're gonna be a separate action.
Okay, you got it. Uh, motion to prove a consent calendar with the exception of eleven, twelve, eighteen, nineteen, uh eighteen and twenty, sorry. Uh, I'll repeat them just to be clear, eleven, twelve, eighteen and twenty, which will we, we will discuss separately.
A second.
Okay, council. Council member Delgado?
Yes.
I am so sorry here, I am drawing a blank, council member Figueroa?
I.
Council member Virgen?
I.
Mayor Portem Galarza?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I. I want to sit up for eleven and twelve and. Uh, does council have any discussion on uh eleven and twelve or ready to approve? Well, was it those lights that you talked about, right, Maritza? And what's the financial impact on the L M D's total funding? What will be the remaining balance?
There is a surplus in that map, so they've got still another million.
I have almost an approval level on twelve.
I'll second that.
Was that second by council member?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and take role, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
I.
Council member?
I.
Mayor Portem Galarza?
I.
All right, we'll bring up item number eighteen, I'm remember. Do you want to stop for?
No, I just, um, so I I would like to bring this back, um, is there a deadline when we need to approve this by Jacob?
Now, this item can be brought back, but we do have Erica Fauci on Zoom in case you guys had any questions that needed to be answered.
I just. Now that we got the point of count two, I just want a further and a more in-depth conversation. You know, with Erica and with the team over at C bag. When it comes to, you know, what's coming to City Coachella, so if that's okay with council, I would like to bring this back. At the next city council meeting, if that's okay.
Erica, do you have any uh responses back regarding, raise your hand?
If you could just unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, thank you, city council and council member for the comment, um, and as I warned Jacob, I am. Uh, multitasking with being a parent in the background, so my apologies for not having my camera on, I hope you understand. Uh, your, your point is a fair one, uh, the point in time count is out, uh, the homelessness committee will be receiving an uh update next week. On it and our fourth district numbers went up. And there's a few reasons for that the county can better explain, um, and I'm certainly happy to entertain questions. Our, our program is part of a larger network here in the Coachella Valley to address homelessness. Uh, we are not the only solution, our C V Housing First program has been really successful with a laser focus on the chronically homeless. And as I explained at your last meeting, that's to address those uh chronically homeless individuals who are most. Uh, problematic and most repeat of um names that your code enforcement and law enforcement see. Um, which in turn reduces the amount of money hopefully that you're spending on those services. Um, but it it is, it is not the end all be all solution. Um, but I I'm happy to address any specific questions that you might have.
Thank you, Erica, um, and I, it's, it's a lot towards who is that prior to me serving as. Um, the member for the homelessness committee, you know, prior to that, I served as an alternate, and I think I went to one. Or two meetings, so I do want to get to know, I want a little bit more information, uh especially when it comes to the homeless population. And who's being housed in the housing two hundred, um, you know, I see that. You know, the city of Indio and and the city of Palm Springs do have a great deal of uh homeless population, you know, but ours is high. You know, in comparison to other cities with the same population size. And so I I would like to, you know, just address some of those. Um, you know, if council wants to move forward with approving it, that's okay, but I, I do want just a little bit more details. Uh, about, um, you know, what's coming up to City Coachella, you know, we have a homeless population. And many of our parks and many of our commercial uh buildings and commercial sites. And this is one of the issues that gets brought up to me consistently. Um, and so I I would like further discussion.
Yeah, how how about we, we move forward on this and then where we stay open to the idea of other things that we can. Do, obviously, your point is well taken, um, because homelessness is just growing. And uh, and we have our needs now. And it, uh, the point in count is pretty clear regarding what's, what's occurred twelve percent, I will say though. And and this is something that I know that at C VAG and. Uh, uh, and the executive committee, we've discussed is that. You know, we couldn't be a a product of our own success, uh being that because we have. Facilities, we're also getting. Other and areas and sending their homeless to us. And, you know, we've realized that in Palm Springs, we've realized that in Indio. Um, you know, for us in Coachella, obviously, our border is at forty eight. And the services that are on that border too in the neighboring community are just a block away. And, you know, homeless don't know borders, they just, they they know services and then they just. They just walk, they just go, you know, we've had heart problems on us, we've had problems. On the canal, you know, we've had problems in front of the casino. We're having problems here in downtown, we're having problems. Believe it or not, I don't want to say the part, but there's one part that not too bad, but the the parts are. But yeah, we're open to do more if that's what you want us to do, because. Yeah, you know, mental health is another factor, drug use is another factor. And so we gotta kind of look at all the different strategies, but obviously, you know, this effort it means is a. It's a first step and hopefully we can develop more strategies.
Thank you, Erica.
Well, I'll, I'll motion to approve, there is there a second?
It was approved together eighteen and twenty.
Well, that's uh. Let's move eighteen, is there a motion to approve a second on eighteen?
I'll second it.
Can we get a roll call?
So I'll take role, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
I.
Council member?
I.
Mayor Portem Galarza?
I.
Mayor Hernandez?
I move on item number twenty, this is to authorize the city manager to execute a letter of agreement with Canada Biz Consulting, council member.
It's more um comments for Selena and for Gabriel is that, you know, when we, when we did the, the last round and there was a lot of appeals. And um they got pretty messy and contentious, and so that's um. The consultant that we're contracting kind of really focus a bit more on that so that we don't have a repeat of it. It was very lengthy, um, and we ended up having to pay out much more because of the length of time it took. You know, but I got a lot of phone calls, um, when it came to the point system. And then also how the appeal process was conducted with the interviewees and how they were selected. And so it's just if you can just put a little bit more, you know, emphasis on that so that we don't have a repeat of that.
Those are good points, and we plan to be a little more thorough and learn from our mistakes and bring a better robust. Uh, appeal process to forwards.
Kind of be third round, that what this is for?
For the overall social equity program and, you know, probably bringing new tiers and adjustments to the ordinance as well to make it more favorable, so we can get more applicants.
Yeah, I I do want to, you know, I I agree with councilor Delgado, same time, uh, while we try to be more efficient, it's not gonna be a perfect process. We just look at city of Indio, they're doing theirs and my understanding is their first ranking, the top ten, the top are no longer the. Top that were in the first because of all the appeals, it happens in every city, there's, it it'll, there's gonna be appeals all the time. Um, and it it may take longer than 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 we want, I just want to make sure that we are open to that, obviously, we can be better than we did the first few times. Um, but but, you know, it's not gonna be a a perfect process because we've had some mistakes, we may repeat other, we may repeat some of these. Um, you know, processes because we do want to be fair and listen to the appeals and all that, so. Um, I I also want to comment, if we're moving to a third process, I I'm very open to the conversation of of this idea of the. Uh, especially for the, for the social equity uh cannabis dispensaries about the second business. It it, I think for for people that don't have money already and you're being a social equity, you know, we're doing social justice equity. The second business is a bear to a lot of local people that want to start getting to the business. And so I just want to bring that forward too for, uh, we should be able to discuss that, you know, if if you have some fund already and you're a business owner, then. Yeah, you could start, uh, you know, it's a second business, uh, but when you are. Uh, a business, uh, a a local and and also getting some social equity uh funding. That, you know, that 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 second business is is sort of will will be unfair to. To someone that's just trying to get into this, into this business and trying to hold to that, I I get the economic benefit to it, I I I won't. Argue to remove it from people that aren't. It that don't get a dispensary through the social, social equity uh lens, uh, other outside developers or contractors that bring in cannabis. Business dispensaries into our city that aren't a social equity and are, you know, just corporate, uh, then I agree, you know, let's. Hold them to that second business, but on the locals, I I I would uh like to bring that up to debate, I. I don't agree with it, I think I I see the point on it on the bigger end, but for for the mom and pop shop, I think it's a big bear.
The one thing I would think maybe um not having, making one person do one, maybe they can. elaborate and have someone else like tell the small business and be together so that way it's like an avenue for two businesses.
Right. It 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 can, I mean, it it can be buried too, like we had one of the dispensary down the street here who even within just the partners. Of the local and the cannabis industry, they fell apart, and so they, there's those two partners, adding a third partner for a second business. Could it be even messier, I I I think that we just keep it as is or we remove them, obviously, my, I'm bringing my opinion. Uh, I think, you know, that it's, it is an issue for, uh, like thinking in a, in a, in a social equity, social justice lens. Uh, I do think that it. Uh, I do think that it's not a, a fair process to. To, to locals to make, to force them to add dispensary plus another business, it's, it's a. I think it's a tough, tough, tough position for people that don't have capital already.
Gabe, perhaps you want to enlighten us on this?
Yeah, mayor, mayor council member Gabriel Betis. So, uh, what, what this contract would do would, would provide. Professional assistance on the social equity program, but there is no intent right now to start a new round of, uh, uh, retail applications. So, uh, you know, unless the council, council has feedback on that. But this would strengthen the existing social equity program. We do have social equity applicants that were awarded.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good thing. I, I, I am. I don't want to lose sight of uh, of our success in Coachella. Um, I've, I've had a, a good opportunity to view other cities. Um, including somewhere in neighboring cities, I've, I've seen Palm Springs, potato city, I've seen the county. And uh, in talking to a lot of the dispensary owners in those cities. Um, one of the things that they all agree that we did right was that. There's, there, with the exception of, I think, two, whether we have five or, or, or maybe six. Um, the vast majority of ours are all locally owned. And, and I, I agree with the council that we need to. Make more ways if we do decide to have another round, that locals can own the majority of them. And not just be. A social equity checkmark and then be bought out within a year or two. Which is happening in neighboring cities where the corporate entity ends up keeping the dispensary and then the social equity applicant is out. Uh, I, I don't want to lose sight of that. It hasn't been. You know, it, it hasn't been an, an easy process for a lot of people. But I think, uh, what, what we've done here in the city, like. It, it's gonna pay dividends and it already is, like people. You know, there's local, local participants that get to, that are at play and, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping. That anyone who was part of a social equity application isn't bought out. After a term of two or three years or whatever it is, because that was never the idea. That would, and, and unfortunately in the other cities that I've seen. That's exactly what's going on, including the neighboring city of Indio. The terms that are happening, they're good two, three years of checkmark. They get bought out, give them a hundred K or whatever, and then there's no participation long term. That's not our intention. Our intention was never to do that. Our intention has been to create generational wealth. Allowed, allow access to people in this community to. A, a market that traditionally has not been available, but was actually criminalized. And I, I don't want us to lose sight of that. Um, uh, you know, if we go, if we go down the road or we open more up. I think that should be our goal too, to make sure the locals have an opportunity to own. Uh, uh, majority stakes and not just participatory stakes. And, and I think that's the difference between us right now and other cities, and that's what I hear about. The corporate entities and big, 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 big uh, investment arms are basically. Caught, have caught on to what's happening and they're just using people for buy the license and that's it. So I don't, I don't want us to lose sight of that and I hope we continue to allow for. People in the community and families to participate in this initiative.
Uh, motion to approve uh, item number twenty.
Second.
I'll take role, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa.
Hi.
Council member Virgen.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galasa.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move on to new businesses, this is approved corporate agreement with El Grito. Danny Lux.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, before you, this evening to discuss a cooperative agreement with um. Premier with Telemundo and the Mexican consulate for this year's Edgito event. Um. The Grito September sixteenth actually falls on Saturday this year, so we um, have had discussions with Telemundo and they. Um, are supportive of moving forward with that as a proposed date for this year's event. Um, again, the event is proposed to happen at Rancho Las Flores Park. Um, this is a snapshot of last year's event. Um, with uh, multiple headliners, um. Estimated attendance has been um, around the fifteen thousand mark at this park for this event. This is our largest event every year. So we're before you just to make sure, um, the will of the council is still to move forward with the cooperative agreement for this year.
Just question.
Yes.
Telemundo is coming in with. Their.
Yes. Yeah, that, so Telemundo, the part, uh, the agreement, um, is a collaborative with Telemundo primarily. Um, and they bring forth all the marketing, they manage and acquire all the artists. And they also manage the stage for us. So we do acquire the stage and sound, but they manage the, the stage, the day of the event, right?
They're paying for the artists.
And they pay for the artist. So their contribution here is eighty to a hundred and ten thousand depending on the artist. We won't know the artist till we get closer because as artists start making their, their schedules. That's how, um, that's how they're selected essentially. We usually capture artists on their way from and to their events in order to capture them at the best rate. So the, um, the music will be based on what Telemundo really advertises and markets on their station. And that genre is generally regional Mexicana music, which includes ranchera, norteño, corridos, cumbia and banda. So that will be the focus of, uh, the selections that are finalized. The last, this last year, we had. Los dos de la S, Neto Bernal, Los Morros del Norte, Elas de la Sierra, Banda Reina, Del Valle and Grupo Carisma. So, um, we will update the council as we know more about this year's lineup, but usually it's closer to.
Let me, let me put a, a plug for my colleague to the left, who was always asking for regional music from Guerrero. And Oaxaca, because it's not just.
I've asked.
The north, uh, end of Mexico. Is that correct, councilman?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent.
And so I, I've asked until long as they fit one of those categories, if they do not, you know, reggaeton, pop.
Oh, yeah.
Those are not gonna be components that Telemundo is gonna go after. So I'll keep pushing for something more and I've asked, but, um, we do, you know, they, they are. Within their budgets, so, um, I think that probably eighty percent of the budget probably goes to a lot of the. Um, the marketing components that they, they are able to acquire.
And like the mayor mentioned, I know it seems pretty weird too, but, but if, if, if anyway, we could, you know, just highlight that we want to bring Danny Lux too into the ci- into the city. You know, he was at Coachella Fest and. A local guy and anyway we can, you know, make sure that we can bring some local talent to that too, I mean, and, you know, put that out there.
Will do. And then we usually always have a real local talent that is usually kicks off the event. So, uh, but I will also pitch, uh, the request.
All right, uh, any questions?
Um, Maritza, what's the percentage of, um, Coachella businesses that we were able to acquire?
We did make the sixty.
Okay.
Um, percent that was requested by council, so the city's responsibilities are listed here. Um. We will meet the sixty again, that is our goal. Um, of the sixteen, uh, food vendors, sixty percent are Coachella businesses. Uh, we are also looking at doing an RFP as we've done for some of our other businesses, um, events, excuse me. With regards to the beer garden. So the change this year operationally for the beer garden is that, uh, we'll be looking for a local business to fill that operation.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Um, but that allows for motion.
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, uh, can we get a roll call?
Yes, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa.
Hi.
Council member Virgen.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galasa.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I, um, I'm gonna step off right under number twenty-two, twenty-three. Since I'm off, why doesn't it just do twenty-four and twenty-five?
You got it. Um, thank you. I'll take on, uh, item number twenty-two. A professional service agreement with California Waters Development Inc. to provide design, build, construction services in an amount not to exceed. Forty-six thousand dollars for the design phase and authorize appropriation of forty-six thousand dollars from general fund for Veterans Park. Splash pad project.
Is, um.
Going to the restroom.
Okay.
Give a minute.
Yeah.
You're sorry, then here's presentation.
Yes.
Um. So. Um, not a lot changed on this presentation. Uh, council had requested, um, I gave this presentation. A month ago and council had requested that we bring it back, um, after we look at the budgets so we could. Um, make sure that any potential funding is squared with, with the budget and with the CIP. Um. Just real quickly, again, it's a splash pad at Veterans Park. Um, the proposed area, the splash pad is at the oval area to the. West of city hall, um, and the existing veterans memorial plaques would be relocated to the northwest corner. Uh, where they can be better displayed, so they're not on the ground and, um, where they're getting dirt kicked on them currently. Um, this is the oval area as it looks now, um, you see there's several, but there's several. Vietnam era plaques that are ground mounted currently. Um. As far as additional information from the last presentation, I did want to highlight that. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, Katie, I did conduct public outreach regarding the Veterans Park Splash Pad. And support for the overall splash pad did receive seventy-six percent support from city residents. Um, so on a lot of the research they did, uh, the suggestion to put a splash pad. At Veterans Park was one of the higher supported items that was in their study that they had conducted.
You know what N equals in that pi? How many participants, but I got them, so what's the N?
Sorry. Um. That was on another slide, it was, it was, it was in the hundreds, it was, it was, it was a decent number.
Thank you.
Um. So in, in February, the project was presented to the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, they also suggested moving it forward. In February, staff solicited bids and we received, um. Design build projects from several contractors. Um, after reviewing the bids, we decided, or we had unanimously decided that California Water Development Inc. Was the most qualified firm to submit a proposal on, um, who submitted a proposal on the project. Um. As far as again, what this would potentially look like, the idea is to take the existing. Uh, Vietnam memorial plaques, move them to the northwest corner. And actually put them up on display on angled pedestals where they would be. Um, more visible and, and better respected in and, uh, presentable to the public. Uh, the splash pad would be a military themed splash pad. Um, in line with, uh, kind of the veterans memorial theme. Um, this isn't. A big kid splash pad with, um, you know, water lilies and all that kind of stuff. It's a. Um, something kind of more respectful that would fit in with a city hall and a veterans park.
What's the difference? Splash pad, why don't we go out?
Um, why don't we go all out, you said?
I mean, we're making a thing for kids who play, but they're gonna play respectfully, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it not, um. You know, some splash pads have very big features when it comes to, to lily pads and kind of, um. More. Like playground looking kind of equipment.
Yeah, so what are you doing here? What's the goal here? Just make it look nice for kids playing.
Yeah, something that's. Um. Kind of. Business friendly and not, not necessarily the place where people are going to hang out in their swimsuits all day and like act like it's a water park. Um, but if you're hanging out in Veterans Park and you're, um, you're visiting some of the blacks memorials and your kids want to get wet and that's. They can do that as well.
Okay.
Um. To. I have a picture kind of conceptualizing what that would look like is kind of a more low feature. Um, I'm actually calling it a ground level water feature, uh, rather than calling it a splash pad. To, to try to highlight that, you know, we're looking something kind of more like this, um, that would be. Um, an artistic feature for downtown as well, just as far as being in a business district, being in a downtown, being adjacent to city hall. Um, but all of this kind of design is something that we would bring back to Parks Commission, back to city council. And this would be a interactive process as far as deciding what we wanted to go for here. Um, and again, this presentation and this request is only for the design phase at this time. Some of the renderings that were presented by the developer, you know, and now this is set in stone, this is just kind of preliminary. Concepts that they included with their report is, uh, you know, the military theme with. The low level jets at the, at the, at the ground level. Um, potentially having lights, something that looks good at night, something that looks good year round, being able to have lights, um. Misters, that kind of thing as well. Um, as far as a schedule, if we were to move forward with this. Um. We would be doing the design through June and October. Um, in probably around November, we would be able to come back to council and look at those preliminary designs, those preliminary budgets. Um, in the staff report, so originally, one of the questions that was asked was if we'd move forward with design. Um, how would we fund the construction phase of this? Um, and questions were asked about Park Tiff and, and other funding sources. Um, so within the budget, we have allocated. Um. Park Tiff to other projects, because we, uh, we just went through the budget and, and going through the CIP presentation as well. Um, we do have the, the large central park or yet to be named park and we have, um. Um, uh, other park projects that are moving forward. Um, so at this time, we are looking to. Move forward with the design, um, so that we can respect the community's wishes and, and, and respond to the. Desires that they had represented in the surveys that had been presented, um, and by moving forward the design that gives a shovel ready, ready project. So that we can apply for grants and we could potentially seek grant funding for the construction phase. Um, so the recommendation that is being presented is to only work the design phase so that we have that shovel ready project. Um, and we can use that to seek grant funding.
I did.
Um, so the staff recommendations that were presented in the staff report is to offer as city manager to execute a professional service agreement with California Waters Development Inc. Um, to provide. Design build construction services not to exceed forty-six thousand. Um, and that would be appropriated from the general fund.
Thank you, Andrew. I, I, for me, this is, um, a difficult situation because I understand that. You know, five hundred or near five hundred residents took this survey and. Um, a large percentage of them were in favor of this, um, splash pad. Were they aware that it was going to be what the costs were going to be?
Um, I don't think costs were presented in that survey, but, um. Again, if we move forward with design, we would be looking for grant funding. Um, so the object would be to not have a, a cost to the city in future, but to just have that design ready project. Ready to go to help us get those future grant funds.
Yeah, I. Additionally is that, I mean, I look at all the areas in the city of Coachella and especially the areas that need. Um, a lot more love. And it's really, really difficult for me to understand, you know, why we're going to rip up concrete. You know, where these beautiful plants are, where these plaques are, move them over to the right, which is what, maybe about a hundred yards? One hundred yards. So we're gonna rip up this concrete, we're going to move the plants, we're going to move the plaques. Move them a hundred yards over to the right and then it's gonna be a project that's over half a million dollars. Or half, it's really, really hard for me to make a decision or to be in favor. Of going through all that trouble, you know, when it's perfectly beautiful the way it is. And it's hard for me to understand why other locations are not being looked at. Um, when we're looking at these type of splash pads. You know, because when we're looking at a splash pad, how far is the one from, um, the Shady Lane Park? I mean, it's, it's not that far. From this location, you know, we're looking at, you know, where they're concentrated and we're looking at grants usually. Usually they want to know where all the others are located and the other splash pad is in close proximity to this one. You know, I can't see how strong of a grant application that would be. It seems more appropriate that going into an area where there isn't any splash pads or maybe kids. Playgrounds or amenities that they can enjoy, I think would make a stronger application for putting a splash pad over there. I mean, I support more the splash pad at the fifty three. The Avenue fifty three part that we were looking at, I mean, to me, that makes more sense to be there. Than to be in this area here, what I'm trying to highlight is that it makes more sense. For it to be in an area that we need to build on, not in an area where there's really no need uh when it's. You know, it's a new development, it's a new park, it's a beautiful area. You know, so it's it's very, very difficult for me and additionally is that I don't think that those residents. Are are aware of how much this is actually gonna cost. Because I'll tell you what, before I came to city council, I would look at a splash pad and I would think, well. I would never think it's gonna be more than a half a million dollars, it would have never came to my attention. So I'm wondering if they knew how much it was going to cost, even if it's coming from a diff. Whether they would still have supported it as strongly as they did.
I think that's unfair, like I can't remember, but like when we build parks or a lot of stuff like this in cities like. Costs a lot of money and so to add like they don't that we don't usually add that to surveys, it's like. You know, these things are half a million, millions of dollars, we have thirty five million dollar budget versus like. Families have, you know, less than a hundred thousand dollar annual budget, so like to think that rationally, you know, like I I don't that perspective is. You know, is needed during surveys, but I get like you're a rock uh same and regarding like. It costs a lot, I mean, you know, shade structures cost about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, like. Yeah, you look, you look at a shade structure, you you see it and you know, like, you know, she's the the gazebo you build in your home is only a thousand dollars. But when you think about shade searches that need approval from the state architecture and all this other stuff, it costs about a hundred thousand dollars and so like, I think you you say. Apples and oranges, I don't feel, you know, like. It's sometimes things cost some money because they go through a lot of processes, but. Uh they bring a positive economic investment to the city and a lot of with that, you know, uh the the to invest in. In parks and operations and uh and items that are, you know, to be of a faithful to our kids and our cities and. I think it's a well investment, I don't have any questions, I you know, I I I look, you know, like I wanted to know which members like. But I get your idea, you know, I'm sure it's fun, but it also looks nice and so I'm supportive of this, uh we're again, we're supporting the design process where. You're you're saying we're we're gonna go look for grants, which means that, yes, it costs a lot of money, but we're gonna look for state monies that. That 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 will help assist the city pay for this, that it won't, you know, ideally not come from the general fund, so. I think it's a good investment for the city to uh to to invest in the design fund so that. Our staff could go ahead and look at funding while at the same time continuing to invest in other parks like the top off park, like the. A demo park, you know, there's there's new, you know, the basketball court and tennis ground, tennis field. We never ask question like, do the you know, residents are so happy, but we didn't tell them how much. How much it costs, obviously, it comes to city council meeting and see how much money that's causing, it costs more money than we initially thought and so. I thanks staff for putting together, I think it's a good idea to have the design and shovel ready project so that when grant. Grounds present themselves, that we're able to seek them.
I think it's important to note that it's not just the money that I'm concerned about, it's also the location. Because I feel that it should be in an area where it's more needed. Um and I'm not saying that, you know, uh it wouldn't be fun there, I just think that it there's. A better need for it in another location that is in need. Of an area where children can play and so and I don't think that, you know, so much that we should be going around telling people. How much things cost, my point is that I don't think that they're aware of maybe what the cap the costs actually are. And maybe not provided other areas for them to be able to. You know, decide if this is the location for them or not.
Yeah, like was the survey, you know, my question, I didn't get to see the survey, so that was a survey. Like this only location for a splash pad, because in you know, if I have look at a splash pad, I'm like, yeah, I want a splash pad, but. There's only one location and so maybe allowing people to say, you know, splash pad in, you know. Branchless Flores, because I was there this weekend and there was no, there's no splash pad there, right? So like. Maybe splash pad there or or but I don't know how the survey was worded, because I never gonna see it, so.
The survey did specifically ask about Veterans Park and having a water feature at Veterans Park, because there is no water features there. I also, I like calling it a ground level water feature, um just because when you see. Other downtown areas, they often have uh water features in their downtown um that encourage uh towards economic development and just towards having. A beautiful amenity in your downtown, um Springs, just quote one in. Which is very kind of similar to this concept, which is which is the ground level, it has the lights, it has the misters and it it encourages that. You know, additional economic development encourages the residents to to come to downtown and actually have a attractive feature that attracts people to your downtown. That I recently traveled to Burlington, Vermont, right outside their city hall, they have. An absolutely beautiful one that has all the lights and everything, you can change the lights for different times a year. Change it to purple and yellow if the Lakers are playing or blue when the Dodgers are playing and. Um so you can you can incorporate that as a as an economic driver to your downtown communities as well. Relative to splash pads and other locations, we actually did do a survey for features at Central Park as well. And people also requested a splash pad there and that one would probably be more of the. You know, kid friendly one with like water guns where you're more likely to hang out and have a picnic all day and in your bathing suit kind of kind of feature. So you know, there's different kind of groundwater features, some that are more. Designed to be in a downtown area to attract business, attract residents and 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 highlight what you have in your downtown area. And that's that's the design process that we're looking forward to have.
Person, right, we we have one in Dillon Park, we have one at the demo park, on Avenue fifty one. You know, the the there's a opportunity to obviously uh continue to, you know, increase these. You know, I I I get where, you know, we're coming from, like these. These surveys are intended like for the specific of of some projects, like 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 when we had the Talat project, like it was. About that part, when we do that for other, when we have the part for the grant on central, what is called now Central Park. Survey were about that part, there's nothing like, we don't, we didn't say, wouldn't you want this part, this in another park or would you prefer this at another park? It's these surveys are done with that intent, but you know, like if surveys aren't aren't specific to certain locations. Then they would lose sort of the function of what the surveys are, again, I think today we're approving. Uh an investment of uh a forty six thousand dollars to design phase, we're not approving the half a million dollars. That would cost the the city for the for the construction of this, uh or investment on design so that city can look at. Uh grant opportunities and it'll it'll help the shovel ready. I I I think it's a good idea to to move forward with this investment. Uh and then um you know, obviously, if when we continue growing other parks and it comes up, you know, maybe it could be part of a survey now, right? When we have, when we're doing more 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 parks, you know, uh why, you know, but when we applied for two different parks last. Last go around, why didn't we have one folks on 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 dog uh dog park, another one didn't, right? Like so like. Maybe, you know, we're gonna have, we wanna know how city residents feel about having a splash pad. At every park that we talk about, then we can add that to every survey, but I I I think the the survey itself was meant its function. And I I you know, I think it's a great thing and with that, if there's no more comments, I'll 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 move the question again, it's. Approving the design fund is not approving the part uh the 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 this yet, uh I'll make motion to.
I do want to give um staff some some guidances. Is that I hope that as we're moving forward, that we're not just simply thinking of the downtown. As economic development, but also in terms of mental health and when we can provide, you know, families, you know, our homes are average three. Three kids and then when you're looking at combined families, that jumps up to about five kids. So when it comes to at least children's amenities, I don't want it to be an economic development incentive. When it comes to downtown, I think we're doing a phenomenal job of building it out. You know, do I think that a splash pad would add to it? Yeah. But again, I I just want staff to be looking outside of just economic development, economic development in the downtown. You know, there's other things that we can do when it comes to diffs, particularly with parks and wrecks and it doesn't have to be a splash pad. But we can start identifying other areas as well that we can do with some of that money, so.
And I just want to add a little background, this project was actually approved uh with the I G grant for the Pueblo Yeho apartments. But due to the high cost of the uh fifth street Paseo and the sixth street improvements, we had to cut cut this part out. So this project's been talks for about three years, uh we've been really staff has been really wanting it, you know, I got. Approved by the Parks and Rec Commission and the residents got to chime in and you know, you saw that the outcomes to that. On a personal note, I, when I worked for the city of Redmond, Oregon, we installed one of these right next to our city hall and. It was a home run, people loved it, kids were running around afterwards, they went to get ice cream, coffee, uh it's really a big driver for. You know, not only economic development, mental health, people can come out here, be stressed, run around, you know, get some fresh air. So you know, this has been supported by by uh you know, staff for a while and we hope uh council can uh. Approve just the design as we look for other ventures to fund the full construction, uh we do plan to add this component to the T C C grant. For the construction of the splash pad, um however, you know, I think it's a small investment to have a shovel ready project.
Thanks, Kate, um just really quickly before we move on, I I think it's a great, you know, addition to the downtown area. And I think, you know, my colleagues have brought up a lot of really good points. But how do you deny something like this that the community has asked for? I think I find that a little bit difficult to say. You know, that I know we're we're concerned and we're fiscally concerned and that makes perfect sense, that's why we're here, right? But I think also, you know, staff and and the council. And the council in particular, we get elected by by our community um to find things like this and and. Approve them moving forward and also find solutions and find that funding that we need. And I think that staff is very willing, I mean, you guys have always been great at getting grants. I don't see how we could deny this to the community, so um. I'm fully supportive of it, I think that in the downtown area, we don't have enough things for families to gather. And this would be great, I don't know anybody who wouldn't wanna sit out there and just, you know, you. You don't even have to do it with your kids, I mean, I'm sure my husky would love to run around in that water every now and then, so. So yeah, thank you staff for providing this presentation. It's up to us, right? It's up to us to be able to find that funding and be able to find those solutions and not tell the community. This is great, I think it's great that you wanna see this, but it costs too much. I mean, we're council, that's why we're here, we're here to find solutions, so um I fully support this to be able to design something and then go after a grant, so.
Actually, one of the biggest concerns and things that our residents addresses is this cost, once they find out. About how things actually cost is when we get hit with those comments and we get hit with the criticism. And and it's understood, you know, it's understood.
Yeah, and I think it'll it'll there will be an opportunity to um for them to make comment, right, and say. You know, when this comes back and we're going to either use a grant. Or we're going to use general fund money, whatever that may be, that's an opportunity also for our community to show up and say. We don't, we don't think you should be spending this money on, you know, a splash pad. I think that would be a good opportunity, but for now, I think it's important that we move forward with what the seventy six percent of residents have asked for. It may not be ideal for, you know, myself or other colleagues, maybe it's not something we wanted to see. But that's the tricky part about being in this role is you have a vision, you have an idea of what you wanna see in your city. But that's not always gonna be the same vision that the community has or the needs that the community has. So I I I think that, you know, we should be able to move forward with this and at least get the design out of it, so. I don't know.
Andrew, the um once the design comes through, then when do we start looking at or when are you considering? Maybe, I think, is the R F P out already?
Yeah, we we put the R F P out for design previously, so when I came a month ago, that was to award design only as well. So we had already received the bids and and evaluated them, so.
Sorry, and then so when are we looking, so they're gonna come in, they're gonna, you know. Do what they've been contracted to do and then what are we looking at the timeline?
Can you go back to the timeline? I think you showed you had like a very small um right there.
So now what are you looking at?
So between June and October, they would be doing the design, so they would be giving us all the recommendations, specifications on what it would take to build a a. Ground level water feature at City Hall, um evaluating the electrical systems and and water availability. Filtering systems and all that kind of stuff as far as. What kind of electrical capacity, what kind of water capacity would take to install a feature? And then we would be looking at uh looking at different options as well. You know, if what size pumps we need for what kind of different features, if we want something that. Only shoots five feet in the air, if we want a central thing that shoots thirty feet in the area, there's. Very different size pumps and electrical demands you need for those kind of features.
So how long do you think that we would be able to, and this is more of a question for Selena, is that if you're putting out for grants? How long do you need before we could move forward and see if we can secure anything? I mean, it comes down to either the grant or the diff, I mean, that's what it comes down to, I prefer the grant, you know, but. How successful, you know, do you think that? You think there's a good opportunity?
In in the immediate term, and we are planning on if we move forward the design, including this in the T C C grant as well. Because having a feature like this within your central downtown area, I think would help with the overall. Scoring and rubric for the transformative communities as well.
So we're we're gonna be.
So immediately, we've been moving forward with grants as well.
Got it, is that what you were gonna say? Okay, yeah, that that makes me much more comfortable that you're gonna be putting in. And grants that you've already been working on and that people already know that we're going in for the second round. I think so, having said that, you know, I hope that when this comes back. We can then discuss, you know, if it doesn't come through the grant, if there. You know, other opportunities.
I then I made a motion, is there a second? Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa? Councilmember Vigen?
I.
Mayor Potanga Larso.
Moving on to item number twenty three, recommend uh recommend uh staff recommends approval of M O U for library operations at the Coachella Library. Between City Coachella and County Route seven. Where it's.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Jason, uh the item before you this evening is um conversation of two point, uh two parts. Regarding our M O U with the county for library services, which we uh currently have and we've had for decades. We most recently um entered into an M O U with the county for library services for the new library in two thousand eighteen. And that the term of that contract is coming due, it it does um term out in June thirtieth of this year. So uh we bring in the item before you to evaluate renewal of that M O U, um the existing. M O U proposed before you tonight has the following items um with respect to continued services at the current site. The term would be extended through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty eight, it will continue to provide. Library services primarily with the city picking up, building maintenance services, primarily all of utilities with the exception of internet. Which is provided through the contract with the county and it will um identify that all. Existing and future library space uses by an outside organization would come before the council for any approval. And additional programming continues to be available à la carte at a hundred and ten dollars per hour. And that that exists in the current um the à la carte option in in the current agreement. Additional to that, um we um the staff did receive approval from council to submit a California State Library Grant. Um and was also notified in October of last year that we that the city's application was successful. And um being awarded four point five million, in conversations with the state, they are requesting. That the library annex location um as identified uh being the old library, we call it still the old library, a lot of times. It's the location on Seventh Street next to the senior center, that that facility would also need to be incorporated into the city's M O U for library services. As the final result of that grant, the improvement of that building would be identified as a library annex, this needs to have be served as library. Facilities. With that augmented service, there are costs to that, obviously, um so that is a component of this M O U. Um and be um for discussion for the council. Um, and be, um, for discussion for the council. The, as Andrew mentioned, I think in his presentation, the construction of the improvements would take about a the design would take about a year. So we would not be looking to be into construction till the, not that next fiscal year, but the following. So at that point, we would be looking at some operational costs, the startup cost to add the annex would be seventy to roughly ninety thousand dollars in that startup cost. I can go into a little bit more detail on the next slide, but essentially would be for equipment. So we're looking at like three D printers, sewing machines, um, kits for, for coating, like raspberry kits for coating and things that are stem based, make or space type items. And that programming is currently not as available in the library right now. It was not space that was available. And I think it was in the the conceptual designs of the current library facility across the street. We had looked at that, but we ran out of spacing essentially. So the library annex provides that opportunity. Um, and during this next fiscal year, we'll be doing outreach to the community to identify what those programming desires are by the community, right? And those would be incorporated into the library annex. However, um, the, the cost to, to serve that facility are between a hundred and seventy-three thousand and two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars annually, based on the number of hours the annex would be open. And that ranges from sixteen hours to twenty-five hours. Um, in the M O U, as it's written in the staff report, staff's kind of middle of the line approach is twenty hours. The current library is open forty hours a week, so the annex would augment that by fifty percent of the current operating so, cost. Um, but again, that operational cost would be about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and it would first impact us at probably twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. And so, um, before the council is a, a variety of options with regards to adding the annex into the M O U. Again, the impacts would really be felt not next fiscal year, but the fiscal year following. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Keep in mind that if we do not award an, uh, one of these options, that the city would be forced to return the grant funds since we will not be able to.
I'm comfortable with the, with the option that the city staff, uh, uh, recommends. Uh, question on the last point on existing organizations, alternative stations require city council approval. Is this for long-term use or for like short-term, like what we can use? I'd rather have like city manager, you know, we don't, we don't, I don't want to wait for a council meeting if it's like, uh.
If it's any uses for like their meeting spaces or their programming rooms, the county already has a program where they do permits like we do.
Okay.
But if it's for the library in general space, um, the, the intent in that is that those are brought before the council.
But, but it's like, look, for like long-term projects or, or how have?
Any shared, uh, the council can give us direction how they, if they want that.
Yeah, I, 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 I think it's a great idea. I, I do want to give a little more flexibility to the city manager. If there's things that come up, like, uh, you know, economic conference coming last minute and we don't have a council meeting, I'd rather, I, I hate to have like, it'd be only us. Or something that you could approve, you know, obviously by calling, calling the council or not.
Keep, keep in mind, this is just a space for the library that doesn't include our conference rooms. We still control that portion of it.
Awesome. I don't, I don't find with how it is. Any questions or?
I just agree, you know, that's, this is for the larger, bigger.
The big space where the circulation is. So that space, if there's any other uses for that, that that would come back to council.
I would, I would be okay with, um, delegating that city manager with, with the caveat, if it's something that would, you know, require that he'd feel that it should come into the council for a specific item, but like, uh, Mayor Protem talks, I mentioned, that would be fine with that. So.
So any long-term, so the language wise, any long-term requests would come to the city man, to the council. Any short-term could be, um, approved by the city manager. So make that language edit.
What do you recommend?
No questions for me.
All right, uh, motion to approve.
Okay, I'll take role. Council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa.
Aye.
Council member Virgen.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Galasa.
Aye.
Right, sorry. Really quickly, just thank you to staff, to Maritza and Andrew and Selena. This wasn't an easy task. And I know there was a lot of bumps in the road and you had to go back. And so I do thank you for your commitment to making sure we get it approved. Thank you.
Uh, item number twenty-four, City Coachella Annual Progress Report to California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, members of the city council. Anna A. Fernandez here, management analyst for the Development Services Department. And I'll be presenting on the city of Coachella's annual progress report to the California Department of Housing and Community, Community Development. Okay, so starting with a little bit of background, California Government Section Code sixty-five four hundred does require the city to prepare an annual status report on the two thousand thirty-five Coachella General Plan Implementation. Uh, this annual progress report is presented to our city council for review and acceptance, and then it is submitted to the state each year by April first. The A P R assesses how the general plan is being implemented and provides information regarding the city's progress in meeting its, um, general housing needs or regional housing needs, sorry. Uh, our housing activity for two thousand twenty-two shows that the city permitted a total of fifty-two accessory dwelling units, which are meant for low-income households. Uh, the city did permit a hundred ninety-one single-family detached units that serve bo, uh, above moderate income households. The main projects for these were Sevilla, Mariposa Point and Beisima. The city also approved a hundred and eight multifamily, uh, unit entitlements. No permits have been issued for these entitlements. Fifty-eight of those units are meant to serve very low-income households and fifty units are meant to serve low-income households. We did present this annual progress report to our planning commission last week. And they did have a few comments regarding the city's two thousand twenty-two housing activity. One of their concerns was that, um, a huge number of the family, single-family detached units are being sold to investors rather than Coachella residents. Um, they did consider putting a limit on the number of investment homes in the city or treating, treating investors as commercial entities. And they also mentioned that they wanted to provide more support to first-time home buyers and Coachella residents. Uh, and Gabriel Perez, our Development Services Director, will be, uh, going over the general plan implementation section of the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the second part to this is how well we're doing in implementing the general plan. And so, uh, just for the public benefit, the general plan includes seven required elements. Uh, the land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise and safety elements. We adopted that general plan in two thousand fifteen. It included a lot of robust outreach to youth, um, and, uh, uh, adults. And so a lot of the input that was received really informed the goals and policies that were identified in the general plan. And this is what the goals and policies would look like in the general plan. So usually there'll be a goal in one of the elements and then some policies that relate to that goal. So with the general plan, there, there is a matrix of general plan implementation actions that the city, uh, is supposed to undertake to implement the general plan. So it looks like this. I know it's hard to read, but, uh, it's in your attachments. And so there are a lot of actions that are identified for, for each element in the, in the general plan. Uh, the way that the general plan implementation actions are organized, it first identifies with the action the city is supposed to undertake as well as the level of priority for the city. Uh, also the timeframe. So is it a short-term or a long-term goal? And then which department or division has that responsibility to carry out that goal? And, uh, and then how that relates back to the general plan elements. So just high level, um, a lot of this is more detailed in your attachments, but some notable things to mention. So for example, like the land use element, you know, it does call for updating the zoning code and zoning map to comply with the general plan. It does assign that responsibility to planning. So that's already scheduled for planning commission, May seventeenth. In council, June fourteenth, it does call for, um, conducting a historic preservation study. And with planning responsible for that, so staff does propose to take something to council, uh, to conduct a historic resource survey in the next fiscal year. Uh, another action is community engagement, uh, process protocols, uh, with the responsibility by the planning, uh, division and the city manager. Um, staff is preparing to, to take an item before council just to this idea of a resident leadership academy. Um, and that would be presented sometime in, in June. But the other action is design guidelines updates. And if you're aware, the state does require cities to have objective design standards to, uh, be able to evaluate multifamily and single-family projects. Um, and so we are developing those currently and it should be adopted by the end of this fiscal year.
What does objective mean?
That means it can't be guidelines. It has to be something codified in the zoning code, right? So it has to be measurable. Um, and versus identifying that, uh, we want it to be compatible with the surroundings, right? That's too subjective. So something that's very quantifiable. Uh, just another element, there is the mobility element. It does call for pedestrian and bicycle action plan. Uh, the responsibility, engineering, planning, public works and the grants manager. But there was the active transportation plan adopted in two thousand twenty, so that was executed. Now it's just the implementation of those improvements. Uh, we do have a health and wellness element, which is a unique, uh, um, element that a lot of cities don't have. But it does call for, um, certain things like edible landscapes. And so I think the city has been experimenting that with that at the Shitty Lane Park, where there are fruit trees that were planted in the park. And we are requesting that for future park development with new residential, um, subdivisions. Uh, funding additional library facilities, equipment and programs is another action. Um, and you saw the last presentation that, uh, there, we received a grant to be able to, uh, work on rehabilitation of the library annex on Seventh Street. And then the Sixth Street Library was completed in two thousand eighteen. Uh, last thing on here, which notable, because I think this came up in a previous discussion by, by council at one of the last meetings, was, um, having some kind of food truck park, but we have this uh, goal of, uh, creating healthy food truck permit programs, uh, to operate around parks and plazas. As long as they met certain nutritional requirements, but we have no update on that to this point. So that's the end of my report, but staff does recommend that the city council adopt the resolution that allows us to uh, accept this report and send it to the state. Happy to answer any questions.
Just in looking at the information, uh, you know what, I, um, I didn't think we were going to get that much A D U's and fifty-two is pretty good. And that's even without the plans that we're producing. Um, and those plans being kind of over-the-counter plans that somebody can adopt or take in. And, uh, I was having this conversation a couple of days ago and, and a resident asked me, hey, when are you going to get your over-the-counter A D U plans going? It's not even progressive anymore. And I, and I was like, you're right. And, and I say that because, uh, City of Fresno, Long Beach, a bunch, there's probably like twenty-five cities that have already produced these A D U plans for, uh, uh, you know, two-story, one-story, uh, junior A D U, detached A D U, et cetera. And, and so hopefully we can get an update on that too, because I think that will really, uh, help us. And then I would even say too, when it comes to like the S B nine requirements that, that look at, uh, you know, kind of the, what the state intended, right? To allow single-family subdivisions. I, I, I think that's a, a great law, but maybe one of the things that, that could be a barrier or could be is that like, hey, if people want to, you know, if, if it's for housing, that's, that's renewable, et cetera. Like, you know, and maybe they don't live there, et cetera. And we look at that requirement and probably even take it off too. If we want to see more housing be built in Coachella, and I think we do. I, I, I think the one thing that I'm hearing absent infrastructure being built in the unincorporated communities and then absent, um, kind of other cities around us being progressive when it comes to housing type. Everybody's kind of looking at Coachella, um, you know, in terms of building you, uh, what we'd call, you know, affordable, but then also kind of professional entry-level housing. And I, I think we got a cool little story of things that's going on. And then I, obviously the, the planning commission, they brought up some good interesting points and that's something that we want to take on where we want to set a limit uh, with perspective vacation rentals, you know, I, I think that's, that's something that we can really kind of dive into and have really good study and conversations about. I mean, if it's appropriate, it's appropriate. And then the other points about helping Coachella residents. We agree. And I think we, we, we have a first-time home buyer program and through the county, but I don't know that we have our own. I, I believe, Selena, we're still sitting on that one point four million that we need to go out. So if we can kind of figure out a little first-time home buyer program there and go to, go to, oh, you asked, you already asked for the amendment? Yeah. And then the state, let's not forget that the state also put out their new requirements where their program is different where they want to share on the equity that you gain. But, but nonetheless, though, it's, it's, uh, I, 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 I saw an A D U down the street right here on like Ninth Street. It's pretty cool. Uh, I thought it was a pretty cool little design. anyhow, good work.
Motion to approve. No other questions.
A second.
What do you think the state's going to tell us? I mean, how do you think we're doing, Gabe? Because I, I know that a lot, there's a lot of cities that are being challenged on their reports or even their housing elements.
I think we'll be okay. I mean, we, we still have to adopt our housing element, so we're, we're late in that. Um, but, uh, it, it should be coming back to you in the next couple of months. Uh, but as far as housing production, I mean, I think we're doing okay, but our allocation, seven thousand eight hundred eighty-six. That's that, I mean, it, it's going to take a lot to produce that the next eight years.
And then just keep in mind, the county of San Bernardino got like nine thousand. So we've got nearly as much as the county of San Bernardino, which is crazy. You know, just so we can put it to comparison. And I do like, I just read on the, you have the, the zoning consistency too that frankly should have been done a long time ago. It looks like you're making progress on that.
Top for public review right now.
All right. Very good. There's a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, and just for clarification, the motion was council member Figueroa.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I'll take role. Council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa.
Aye.
Council member Virgen.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Galasa.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
Aye. Item number twenty-five, I'm going to abstain as I own property in the downtown.
Got it. Uh, item twenty-five, Pueblo Viejo, uh, downtown parking survey update.
Hello, good evening, um, mayor and city council. Um, so my name is Avalara and I'm the, I'm the planning technician for the city. So I'm going to go over the Pueblo Viejo Downtown Parking Study Update. We actually gave this update to planning commission last September. So this is the first time we're bringing it to city council. And, um, this is for the future management of existing parking supply. So the background, so our intent is to update the planning commission and city council regarding parking occupancy at the Pueblo Viejo Downtown District as it continues to grow. So our next update will be in fall of two thousand twenty-three. Um, so in October of two thousand nineteen, the city of Coachella conducted a parking analysis for, for the parking occupancy here at the downtown. And in this study, we actually, uh, we actually found that parking occupancy, if it exceeds eighty percent, then the parking occupancy is considered full. Um, in this study, it also intended to provide findings and re- recommending to understand potential parking supply and demand, determine right-sized parking standards and manage park, future parking supply and demand. So the study actually, um, recommended various ways that we can utilize to, you know, manage parking in the future. And one of them was cooperative parking management. Parking management, which is both city and property owners to cooperate to utilize off-street parking, bicycle parking, um, also time-restricted parking, paid parking, temporary and overflow parking signage and user information, which means to utilize signage, redirecting visitors to available parking spaces as a useful tool to avoid congestion. Uh, it continues. So it's effective use of leftover space in downtown. Um, converting parallel parking to angle parking, employee parking, which is encouraging employees to park on other, Other designated parking spaces and shared centralized parking structure, meaning that this is our last alternative because it's costly. So we are trying to find, you know, go into the other options rather than this one. And this is why we're making the, doing the study. So back in September five twenty twenty-two, um we conducted our first study in the downtown. Um and this one actually was specifically for Street and Seventh Street. Um we paid special attention on Sixth Street between Orchard and Vine. Uh this is between the library and the city city hall segment, so the parking so. Survey demonstrated that parking is abundant throughout the downtown district. The parking occupancy was observed highest on Sixth Street segment at the at seventy-seven percent. So the outcome of this parking study uh from twenty twenty-two was that. Uh the planning commission um approved a fifteen-minute time restricted parking, so those two spaces that you see. Here on the pictures in front of the library.
Yeah.
So in twenty twenty-three, we actually conducted a study, we did the first study on March, Tuesday, March twenty-eight. And then the second study on Friday, April twenty-first. Um both conducted between the hours of seven AM to five PM, so we expanded the area of study to include the entirety of the. Downtown from First Street to Ninth Street, um the plan organized uh parking in the downtown by number blocks, so. Here you can see the number blocks. And here in this too, you could see the downtown parking occupancy, so the on-street parking occupancy and the off-street parking occupancy, which is. On-street is what the cars that you can park on the street and off-street are privately owned lots. So on the Sixth Street segment between Orchard and Vine, um the peak parking occupancy was at three PM at eighty-nine percent. And the lowest at seven AM and five PM at thirty-three percent. An observation day two, the peak occupancy was at nine AM at eighty-four percent and the lowest at five PM at sixteen percent. And it's important to note that the reason why we chose Observation Day Two, which was April twenty-first, was because of the Coachella Fest Festival. And we wanted to see how that impacted um the occupancy, parking occupancy at the city. So between Cesar Chavez and Street and Grapefruit on Sixth Street. The peak parking occupancy occurred at eleven AM at forty-eight percent and the lowest occurred at seven AM at twenty-seven. Um on Observation Day Two, Day Two, um the parking occupancy occurred at nine AM and eleven AM at forty-six percent. And the lowest parking occupancy occurred at five PM at twenty-one percent. For the library block in block six, uh the highest parking occupancy was actually an Observation Day Two. At nine AM at eighty-two percent and the lowest was also an Observation Day Two at a five PM at eight percent. On Veterans Park Block Five, the peak parking occupancy was at one PM. At fifty-six percent and the lowest was also on Observation Day One, which was at seven AM at fourteen percent. For the Palm View Elementary School Block Eleven, we do get a lot of traffic. Um so the peak parking occupancy occurred at nine AM, I mean, at eleven AM at sixty-one percent for both observation days. So the conclusion, um the peak occupancy in the downtown district occurs around eleven AM at forty-two percent. So the March survey showed that an average of thirty-four percent parking spaces were occupied during the day while the April survey showed only thirty-three percent. Neither the Mexican consulate nor the Coachella Fest Festival two made an impact on the total parking occupancy. The parking occupancy is observed highest on the Sixth Street segment between Orchard and Vine at eighty-nine percent. So staff recommendations, members of the city council might consider recommending options to manage parking on the Sixth Street segment. From eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday, since it has demonstrated the highest occupancy rate through our observations, so it exceeds eighty percent. Um since the study has determined that we do not have any parking issues in the overall down downtown, only on that segment. Uh we can utilize option six uh from the study that was done in two thousand nineteen. Um from the recommended options to better manage our parking occupancy, so. That means the signage and user information to utilize signage to redirect visitors to open parking spaces. Like in Veterans Park. Um so we actually did bring this to planning commission last week and the discussion that they had was. Uh to lease a lease, to provide lease agreements with private owned parking lot owners, so to lease any agreement with parking lot owners around the. This the downtown, meaning the school, um the kidney center. Also to add additional time restricted parking spaces, maybe two more. Um add parallel parking along Sixth Street, make Sixth Street a one-way street. Um determine feasibility of parking structure and have a business business outreach on parking solutions, so. That's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh any questions, comments, concerns from our council?
My comment would be. I'm trying to envision parallel parking along Sixth Street, so similar to what you have over here in Orchard.
Um yes, yes, just like that. So they were talking about kind of, you know, to be able to do that, we would have to. Make Sixth Street a one-way street to add that additional parallel parking of both sides.
I I think that that we we just had a planning committee, the city council meeting about parking and. And we gave direction about, you know, zoning and stuff, I just feel like it's redundant to have this conversation today, we're gonna be having it again. As part of the bigger conversation, I I I just, you know, I don't mean to be rude, I just feel like. Like we just went over some of this a few, a week ago and it's and it's like, why why decided something today? When we might, you know, when we've given direction about zonings and all this sort of stuff and about the parking and looking at residential and commercial. I I I I don't have much to say today because I I sort of like, I'm like, I just don't feel like it's like. Why are we even talking about it right now? That's that's my my thought.
This, it's been very, very helpful for me to understand the parkings and then during the hours because it makes a big difference. So I'm glad to see when we're at our highest percentage during certain hours, that makes a huge difference. Um and as far as, you know, I I understand, you know, council member Carlos's comments. Um about the, you know, the study that we just discussed um with the planning commission. Um but I don't think that this is necessarily um gonna affect that, I think what you guys want just. Is that during peak hours that there be um just additional parking.
On the Sixth Street segment right here on for the library.
On the Sixth Street, um but even I think that a good portion of, you know, the um. Of the study was done today by yourself because you've already identified. You know, when those peak hours and when the highest percentages are during, you know, certain hours.
Yeah, so we have the planning team that we, you know, go, they go around, one drives, the other one counts, so that's how we determine the numbers. Yeah.
I I think this the surveys, I'm gonna say it's it's, I'm not saying it's, I think it's very helpful and I think it's gonna be very helpful to the bigger picture. I just don't wanna give direction today in terms of like, yes, let's lose one way direction. I think this is gonna be helpful to the bigger picture conversation, I I I think today, like. Giving direction when we're also thinking big picture and having a bigger meeting with planning commission about this. I I I I just don't feel, you know, like, I I I don't feel comfortable doing that today, you know, I I I, you know, I think the. Uh how I read the agenda item today was to approve the survey and and, you know, accept and approve the survey. But um but I think I I don't, I don't know why I would give direction today on additional.
And council, this was more informative, uh as as I mentioned, that there is no parking problem in totality of the. The downtown, but it's just giving an update, um we do experience most of the issue between on Sixth Street between Orchard and Vine. Uh but at the same time, we don't see uh any any urgency, we did put the pickup parking stalls, which are helping turnover parking. So overall, that that's what it means, right, uh that we're providing new information. We kinda do this again next year, right? So we observe, hey, there's a, there's an issue, then maybe at that time, it's it's time to act.
Right, I I think, yeah, that's, that's why when I looked at this agenda item, it was to receive and file the parking survey report. I didn't see it as like, let's give recommendation on what to do with the survey, I I think I leave that up to staff, to you all, you guys are experts on this. So if you come back, if you know, a year or or a few months from now, saying, hey, the best thing we need to do is. Is make it a one-way street, you know, and I thought, you know, have my trust on the staff that that's the best recommendation and. And then we'll we'll be open for discussion and and all, and I'll mostly support staff on that, I just, I just was. Today, I think, you know, ready to receive and file the repor- the the parking survey report. I I'm not sure if it was a, I was a little confused by the, by giving recommendation on on uh some alternatives from here.
I think this has answered, I think, a lot of questions for us.
Yeah.
When it comes to parking, because there's always been these question and discussion that there needs more parking in the downtown. And so that definitely eliminated and so I I appreciate, you know, that's, I think that's some of the questions that we've all had. And so, you know, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Council.
Just thank you for the data, it's very good to be able to see when our peak hours are and obviously Sixth Street, yeah, it's really busy, so.
You added those other two meter parkings, it would actually help a lot down there.
The sign.
This the the addition to slots, I think, but that's a good. Yeah, that's a good one there, so.
So, yeah, it's important to note that the two um time restricted parkings that actually have been working very well.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
To uh receive and file this uh survey?
One second.
I'll take role, council member Delgado?
Good job, yes.
Council member Figueroa?
I.
Council member Virgen?
I.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
I.
Uh is a a mayor here still? No, I will get started, I will continue a public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone uh here, present, anyone on Zoom?
No, we don't have attendance.
Alright, um reports, alright, so. If there's no comments on other agenda items, we'll get moving forward to reports and press and council members, um council member Delgado?
Um I attended the Southern California Association of Governments, um Jan Harnick. Um council member from Palm Desert served as a president, she's the outgoing president, so we just um appointed a new one, Tom, I forgot his last name, so. Um additionally is that um, you know, one of the concerns I I'm getting quite a bit. Is about investors coming in and buying a lot of of the housing stock and I know we went over just briefly. Um Gabriel, but I would like to see a bit more on this item, is if we can come bring it back and see. Just how many Airbnbs we have and then how many of them are concentrated in residential areas. You know, another concern I have is that, you know, if it's zoned for residential, is how many Airbnbs that we have and at that point. You know, for me, it's no longer a residential, but more leaning towards a commercial type of, you know, community. Um but that's, that's something that I get quite a, quite a bit and then just a few days ago and. Um someone said in in, it really bothered me, I sort of feel myself get upset. Is uh he said, uh, you know, he had just purchased a house in one of our housing developments. And he talked about how the city of Coachella was a party house during the weekends. And I thought, well, that's terrible, you know, and um but he was talking about how during the weekdays. Um that there isn't anybody out, you know, because their investors were coming in and buying five houses in the same, on the same street. And so I I wanna see where they're located, how many we have and how many of them are concentrated. And what residential communities and I'm wondering if. If they're highly or more highly concentrated in our new residential uh community, so I I would like to see that come back. Uh outside of that, um I don't have too much more comments, I I was the outgoing board member for the mosquito vector board and. They always give this plaque out and it has this massive mosquito on there, so I'm very fortunate to now have one of those plaques. Um they're pretty cool, so I think that's, that's it for me.
Council member Doc Figueroa?
Um just a few items, I do agree with Councilman Delgado on the Airbnb and investor component because. I had a conversation with someone that lives in the city and works in a different city um here in the desert and letting me know that his community is. Seventy-five percent of it is uh Airbnb is what he was trying to tell me, so um you know, really looking into that and how we really addressing that larger. You know, um. Item, right, because it's, you know, how do we make sure it's in order and and how does court enforcement plan to pardon that? And I know that court enforcement did a great job with during the festivals and, you know, I talked to Renee about that, but you know, how do we make sure. Uh the neighborhoods, the people, when they, you know, they're buying a house and they don't know that. Uh the two people next to them, only one of them actually has living people in it that are consistent, that are the same people every day, um. I also attended the mosquito vector control uh board meeting uh this week um. And then I met with the city manager and um Rizza to talk about the equity and social justice ad hoc subcommittee. Um and so we're moving that forward and it should be coming to city council for us to to uh dialogue and and converse and what we want that to look like. Um and so really looking forward to that that project and how we can really move that forward and and have input from community partners. And residents on on the social and equity and and justice component in our city. And lastly, I had uh the Seabag Public Safety Committee uh this weekend, the topic of um conversation was. Uh school resource officers in the Coachella Valley and all the school districts were invited. Uh Desert Sands was present, Palm Springs Unified was in, and CB Unified was not present. But you know, if the conversation really, you know, talked about, you know, the uh what does um. Resource officers look like in different schools and and really the overarching conversation was how do resource officers and. Restorative justice um live in a in a in a harmony. And so that um was a discussion item, no action was taken at that, but it'll be coming back to the Seabag Public Safety Committee uh for the discussion. Those are just my comments and I'm looking forward to seeing other people tomorrow at the Harvey Milk uh breakfast and one item is I do, uh we can bring back. For June and we can do proclamation for Pride Month in the city of Coachella or um. Pride Month, um and invite the LGBT Center of Coachella here.
You know, it's quickly, no, um someone reached out to me with the, I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Delgado, Figueroa already went. Councilmember Virgen?
Thank you, just a couple of comments, um. Uh last week, we had our economic developments subcommittee meeting. Um so we had a presentation, very cool presentation on a partnership and something that the city would. Uh participate and possibly initiate, um it'll be uh for students to participate. In uh doing activities when it comes to STEM and so it was really cool to be able to hear that. Um I know that there's a lot of other things we definitely have to work on when it comes to. Being able to see that, you know, here in the city and and have that event, but it was really nice to to be able to see uh different events coming to the city that are going to. Be able to um cater a little bit more to our community and our kids. Um and uh tomorrow I have the Seabag um. Uh Energy and Environment uh Environmental Resources Committee, so I'll be able to provide an update at our next council meeting. And lastly, uh Feliz Dia de las Madres for those mamas who celebrate today. Um you guys definitely don't go unnoticed, you do a lot of work. I know we have a lot of working moms in the city, so the fact that, you know, some of you are still here right now. Um and then get to go home and still be a mom and do everything that you do, you guys are amazing, so thank you so much and, you know, Feliz Dia, that's it for me.
Uh I'll go next, uh yeah, just to wanted to hear my notes, I wanted to start it, uh Feliz Dia de las Madres, uh to Mexican mothers and. I'm not uh aware of if other nationalities also celebrate it today, Feliz Dia de las Madres. A lot of Mexican holidays, uh these days to the day versus American holidays, we we uh we change to Monday. Uh or Friday and people get a holiday sometimes and so, but um. Yeah, today's a Mexican Mother's Day and so for my mom and my partner, my soya, I can't forget my soya and uh and our my tias and everyone. And then all uh mamas de Coachella and our neighboring communities, Feliz Dia, hopefully uh your sons. Uh and your partners brought uh nice flowers at least or a nice purse, if not, uh send them to sleep in the couch. Uh or or if you're converting your garage to uh to an ADU, send them there. Uh to, you know. Uh, to, you know, that's what I'm saying. Um, so past meetings, um, before, since the last council meeting. Uh, that I've got access to attend was a, a two-by-two with Coachella Valley Unified School District. Uh, it was um, uh. A, a very uh productive meeting. We're gonna be setting up uh these meetings more often. Uh, than not, I believe we're discussing about possibly doing it either uh every other month or, or on a quarterly basis. Uh, to talk about uh items like uh the uh CB High School. Uh, that uh we wanna make sure, you know, it, it's hopefully uh on the, uh, you know, hopefully the school board. Uh, is able to get on a bond uh item in the next election, uh, uh, as well as uh. Uh, other um more communication between the city and, and uh, and the school district and so forth. And so. Uh, I believe the school district, our school district uh in, in, in uh comparison to. Uh, other school districts regarding uh public safety, uh, has uh the same amount uh on average. Uh, amount of, of uh, of uh suspensions of, of other issues and. And our neighboring districts. I do think that uh sometimes our district gets a lot more negative attention from, from media and that's not fair. Uh, for instance, when there was a shutdown in CB High School, uh, there was also a fire at Lucky High School and. And the news were all talking about the shutdown at CB High School. And nobody was really talking about the fire at the restroom at Lucky High School. So I, you know, it, it's, it's something that we observe as leaders in the Central Valley. And so I, I, I'm not going to. You know, to say that because I don't wanna fall to that narrative, that our kids are dangerous. Um, I, you know, I think that our kids are, as we see, we, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but we brought a lot of great uh students. Uh, that the uh, to um, to receive awards and uh that, just more of that in, in our schools. Um, so that's, that's sort of, that's my opinion. Um, and uh, future meetings uh before the Latin, the next council meeting is we have a two-by-two with Coachella Valley Water District next Tuesday. Um, and uh, you know, I, I don't have any other scheduled meetings from, uh, from then. Uh, tomorrow I have to be at work in Riverside, uh, Dr. Figueroa. So if you wanna take someone to take my seat at the Harvey uh Milk. Uh, diversity breakfast, please send my regards. I'm just not able to be there. Uh, it's during the day when I'm at work and I have to be out of town. So my apologies. Other than that, I'm done.
Well, I only got twenty minutes worth of comments, I'm kidding. Um, just the real quick, just to, I, I. Comment in the, uh. Uh, this past week, um, I had an opportunity to go to Sacramento on behalf of RCTC and, and. Uh. Talk about uh AB eighteen thirty-five, which is. A, i- i- it's, it's a bill that allows Seabag to pursue different tax measures and. Uh, and, and our, as well as RCTC. And today we had a, an RCTC general meeting, actually here in the desert. And while RCTC's budget was one point two million, a lot of it was programmatic in the sense that. It's passed through its measure as it go to cities and other uh entities like Sunline, et cetera, or RCA. Um. And one of the things that became very apparent is that the region, including ours, is asking for more investment in transportation. But if anybody's following RCTC's budget, um, the. It, it, basically the bond monies have been called for, so investment for the future is, is, is gonna need. You know, a, a measure and possibly within the next couple of years to try to. Um, fund these projects and within that measure, more than likely what is gonna be the. The, the different sightings of, of the um, the train into the, into the Coachella Valley, the commuter train. So we'll be watching that as, as things progress, but even, even after the train. You know, that, that will allow, if we're lucky, about eight thousand commutes a day. But there's still gonna be a huge need to address transportation. And, and one of the things that's. In traditional transportation, I should call it like, the bridges or, or, or even, you know, um. Intersections as well. And one of the things that we should pay attention to, because we're a growing community. Is that the state and primarily being led by kind of urban areas. That, you know, they're, they're, they're moving to. Not fund investments in suburban communities or, or, or rural communities. That don't meet the vehicle miles travel criteria. And anybody who's follow. Um. Uh, what we had to suffer and do to get the Captain Trade Project in downtown knows that. It wa- it was tough. It was a very tough deal. We had to apply like three or four times and, and then we had to get very, very creative, but. It's something that we all need to pay attention to and just be very mindful of because. Potential future projects are gonna become very difficult to fund. Um, and these projects are expensive, you know, fifty million dollars for. Interchange. It's actually eight, ninety million when you think about the bridge and the interchange on Avenue Fifty. And sixty-seven million or something like that, the interchange over the I ten. So. We just need to be very, very diligent and, and, and be an advocate for investment in. Suburban rural California. The, um. Next week, uh, I, I know the city, a few of us will be going to ICSC and so I, uh. I hope we have a good conference and I just wanna say that Selena put together a, a, a pitch to the. Uh, Economic Development Committee about our approach to ICSC and what we directed was that they. Uh, the staff set up meetings with uh different developers and different um. Commercial centers in our city, so that we might be able to assist them to try to get some tenants. The good thing is, is that we've been seeing consistent uh investment in single-family, multi-family. ADUs now in the city. And I think that's a, that's a really good thing. And would they say that um with fruit tops. Comes commercial. And, you know, we need to make sure that we get our little share of commercial and, and. And that we really kind of just do a good job of, of ICSC. I'm not sure how many of the council members are going. I, I know that I'm gonna go. Um, but it is a good little conference, you know, to really see the totality of what's out there in terms of. You know, how economic development, but then also how it's really just tied into commercial retail development. And it's, it's, it's a neat little deal to see. If that, Mr. City Manager, the board is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say it's Feliz Dia de las Madres as well and thank you.
Yeah, the, and Feliz Dia de las Madres. And by the way. Latina women's in, in, in the United States celebrate twice. They celebrate today and they celebrate it obviously on Sunday, so.
Similar to a birthday month.